Call to order, the August 15th, 2022 County Commission Meeting. Welcome all of our guests that are here tonight and invite you to come back at any time that you have the opportunity. This time for the prayer and pledge, I would like to introduce Commissioner Mike Kurtz.
Good evening, everybody. If you would, bow your heads and pray with me.
Please rise.
Lord, we know your blessings are perfect and your promises are great. I pray tonight we all remember your greatest commandments of love, love of you and love of each other. The work and decisions that we all make here and we all do it with open minds, open hearts, and always keeping your grace and your mercy for us as our example. We're so thankful for the protections of those who volunteer to serve us and ask that your hand guide them. I'm thankful for the leaders in this room and their willingness to lead our community. It's a privilege to stand up here tonight under the freedom of our nation and pray these things to you. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you address the flag? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurtz. If you would, please press yes to accord your presence at tonight's meeting. We have a full house at 25:00. Report from the Steering Committee, Commissioner Patton.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Oh, good, okay. Couldn't hear him. The Steering Committee met on July the 18th. You have those minutes in your packet. You also have the minutes in your packet for Thursday, October the 4th, motion that they be submitted and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adoption of the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no consent agenda? There is no public hearing for tonight. To my knowledge, there is no special recognition for tonight as well. We'll move forward. Report for the Minutes Committee, Commissioner Bishop.
We got here quicker than I thought we would. The July the 18th and August the 4th committee minutes were in your packet and also approved the minutes for the commission meeting on July the 18th. Make a motion that this be received and filed.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I make a motion due to spence with the reading of the minutes.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commission, I would just like to take just a moment, if I could, to recognize the commissioners that have spent quite a bit of time in service to this commission. I'd like to introduce you, if I could. I'd like you to stand, if you would, until I finish, and hopefully it will not be that long. But I want to call you out in the years of service. The first one would be Commissioner Ash, which served two terms, 2014 to 2022. Commissioner Robinson served two terms from 2014 to 2022. Commissioner Vanatta, who served two terms from 2014 to 2022. Commissioner Walker, which served two terms from 2014 to 2022. Commissioner Patton served three terms, 2010 to 2022. Commissioner Rich, who served four terms, 2006 to 2022. Commissioner Bishop, which served from 1982 to 1994 and 2014 to 2022 for 20 years. And the last one is Commissioner Stafford, six terms, 1998 to 2022, 24 years of service. You have led this commission through the first pandemic since 1920s. You've handled ice storms, straight line winds, flood, tornadoes, and a lot of political climate in our world that we have today. You handled communications through Zoom, first in our history. Under education, you converted the old Lebanon High School into Central Office. You built Springdale Elementary, Glavell Middle, Green Hill High School. You got Wilson County out of the portable business in schools. You finished putting an SRO that was started by Commissioner Ash many years ago into every school, including a special school district. You approved $60 million just recently to rebuild Stoner Creek and West Wilson Elementary and add 800 students for respectively each classroom. You approved funds for the next elementary, middle, and high school for land purchase. You promoted a sales tax increase to raise teacher pay, and the citizens passed it. You added indoor practice facilities to all high schools that didn't have one at this time. Under public safety, you purchased the Highland Heights property for a future multi-level court system. You doubled the size of the jail with a 400-bed addition. You established drug-free Wilco in the epidemic opioid epidemic. You made the Volunteer Statesville Station at WEMA a live station, adding a fire truck, an ambulance, and two personnel. You added a fire truck and personnel to the Watertown Station, which covers the Watertown, outside the Watertown area, fire coverage. You built a new fire station in Norrine. You put an ambulance, a fire truck, and two personnel there. You have the opportunity tonight, if you pass it, to purchase a third ambulance for Lebanon, Mount Juliet, and a spare ambulance. You placed a security officer in this courthouse to protect the citizens here with a panic button and a call system for all. Under quality of life, you have another opportunity tonight to put $2 million towards an agriculture learning center that will go down possibly as one of the best maybe around in our area in that educational world. Designated $12.8 million possibly tonight in a resolution to fund water projects throughout the county. You administered two half a million dollar grants to citizens in need through the home grant. You helped along with the legislature end admissions in Wilson County. Established Wilson Work. You were part of bringing NASCAR back the last two years in a row to Wilson County. You purchased the old Green Hill Women's Club to put a satellite office for Mr. Goodall in the Mount Juliet area. You converted the old Fred's Building into a new election commission. Under finances, you adopted a clear glove system, which brought the public clear understanding of what our budget was about. You passed all of your budgets on time with no tax increases. You approved two pay plans, bringing significant increases to their wages. You gave raises in 2018. 2019, you passed a pay plan with raises. In 2021, you gave a $3,500 bonus to hazard employee pay. And then in 2022, you passed a third pay plan of $6.6 million, which maybe was the largest increase we had given. You refinanced bonds to save the taxpayers of over $7 million. You moved us to the first round of the audit class by passing your budget early. You moved the county from a AA to AA-plus bond rating. You restructured the hotel motel tax to finance the Ag Center, Tourism Department, and the Health and Recreation Funds. And you took the fund balance at an all-time high of over $20 million. You were part of the widening of I-40, passed 109 to South Hartman. The Central Pike interchange, you got on the docket, and the widening of 109 was completed. You relocated the road commission to all, under all of one campus. At the James E. Ward Ag Center, you were a part of helping secure the Wilson County Tennessee State Fair. You helped administer $14 million that will be coming to the James E. Ward Ag Center because of the state fair. You secured the FFA headquarters, moving that to the James E. Ward Ag Center, and you secured naming rights to the Tennessee Farm Bureau for the expo. Under general government, and then I put this towards the last, but all of these are important, you established a peg channel. You upgraded the phone system. You upgraded the rules booklet, the employee handbook. You televised the first county commission in April of 2020. You have laptops for all commissioners who wanted, and email addresses, upgraded the sound system and the screens in here, and put permanent cameras in this commission room. Adopted a Wilson County flag, a Wilson County license plate. Adopted a comprehensive plan for planning and access development for families that wanted to keep their loved ones at home instead of putting them in the nursing home. You allowed that to happen. These are just a few of the things that I wrote down that are on your list of accomplishments. Most importantly, you are a respect to your citizens, and you answered their call at every time. I never had any complaints at all from any commissioner for the whole time that I've been in service here. And you represented us well everywhere you went. You were respected. I thank you for your service, and it's kind of like being a coach. You will always be called a commissioner. You may leave the office, but you'll always get the calls, and there is no doubt in my mind that you will always serve the public continually. So I want to thank you for your service tonight. Thank you. At this time, Representative Boyd would like to come and give you a legislative update. Thank you for allowing me to do that tonight.
Commissioners, it's great to see you tonight. As I get started, I'm actually reminded of one of the first times that I ever spoke in public. And I asked one of the guys there, I said, "What should I talk about?" He said, "Clark, you talk about five minutes, and then you sit down. These folks have other stuff to do." And Mayor Hutto gave me a similar talk earlier today, so I do know that time is of the essence. I will start off by telling you that, you know, as we look around this world at all of the crazy things that are going on, from inflation to geopolitical issues to wars to everything like that, I think I, like most of you here, believe that this world needs a strong, strong America. But I think it's equally as important that this strong America has a strong Tennessee. And I think right now that I can happily report to this body that right now Tennessee is strong, Tennessee's in great shape, and Tennessee has a lot of great things going forward. And I'll start off by telling you that at the conclusion of the General Assembly this year, one of the most important and paramount jobs that we have is to pass a state budget. And we did pass one this year to the tune of $52.8 billion. Now, when I was on the Coleman Walker Show, as many of you probably have been before, one time we went off air and he looked at me and he said, "Clark, that is a really big budget. You sure you want to tell people that?" And I need to get a little disclaimer out there, and that is that when money comes in, regardless of where it comes from, it is in the budget. If we do a tax cut, if we give money back, whatever we do, it's in the budget. And that budget is somewhat inflated because some federal CARES Act money that fell in our lap last year. And so don't be surprised next year if you see the budget drop substantially from that amount. But with that much money in the budget, we have done a few things, such as cut taxes this year. And so if you haven't noticed, you're experiencing the month of August right now, a one-month sales tax holiday from groceries. And so for that one month, you won't have to pay grocery sales tax. We recognize that a lot of local government gets their money from the sales tax of groceries, and so the state will be reimbursing that portion of it. We have also recognized that farmers, for a long time, have had certain sales tax exemptions, but not on everything. And so this year, with the help of the Farm Bureau and a lot of other stakeholder groups, we are now going to exempt equipment that farmers have. If you have that exemption form, you will no longer pay sales tax on that. So I think that was very well-deserved, and it was a long time coming, so I'm very proud to see that. And if you renew your tag between July the 1st and June the 30th of next year, you will not pay the other half of the will tax, which is $23.75. Now, I know that will not go real far in a world where gas is $3.50 to $4.00 a gallon, but please spend that $23 wisely. And so it is your money. And so one of the big things that we did this year is we changed the way schools are funded in this state. And we changed from what was called BEP, the Basic Education Program, to something called TISA.
And to tell you, I did not plan that. But what is done differently, probably the simplest way I can explain that is before the money was allocated, every so many students, they got a teacher, every so many students, they got a principal. And my sweet wife was a guidance counselor for years, so I'll use her as an example. It used to be that every 500 students got a guidance counselor. Now, if you were a school district that had 995 students, realistically, you needed two guidance counselors. But the state of Tennessee was only going to give you the funding for one, because you did not hit the thousand threshold to get that. Under this new model, the funding is applied on a per-student basis. So that same scenario, you would have, if you had 995 students, you have 99.5% of the funding that you needed. So I think that was a good thing to happen, and the bottom line for me is it resulted in about $19 million more coming to Wilson County schools. Director Luckel said he was for it, so I'm for it, and I was happy to support that. And so that's money, tax dollars, coming back into Wilson County schools. We've also gave teacher pay raises to the tune of $124.7 million. We are recognizing that we need to match our graduates to the workforce that's out there. And so we're not in any way discouraging people from going to college, but we are recognizing that there's a need for the trades. And so we allocated $500 million to go to the high schools and to go to the middle schools to create basically CTE programs at those schools. Ran into a problem in East Tennessee, but there was a teacher that had came out of retirement in the capacity of a full-time substitute teacher, and she was essentially teaching a class of students. And then she ran up on that period of time where her TCRS retirement was going to cut off, and she just left. And understandably, she was an retired teacher there, pretty much coming into work. And so we made a change this year so that teachers can continue to draw their retirement and fill those critical vacancies that we see in public schools around Tennessee. We've also done that with a few other essential professions, law enforcement, EMS, jobs as well. So that's something that I think was a good idea. Bill that I passed this year that I'm very proud of, and hopefully it will help local government like we expected it to help state government, and that is if you are a veteran of the armed forces, if you served in the military prior to 1975, when you came to work for state or local government, you were given up to four years, didn't have to pay for it. You were given, and it was credited by the local government and the state government. So at the end of your first year, you were five years before your retirement. We have never updated that statute since 1975, and I'm very disappointed in that. After we look at the wars that we fought over the last 20 years, I think that's a travesty. So we worked this year with the treasurer, a lot of different veteran stakeholder groups, and we did pass legislation that moving forward, if you have served in periods, certain periods of armed conflict, you can actually get your time credited to the TCRS. That is mandatory to the state. It is voluntary at the local level. I hope that this body will adopt that and allow our veterans to come work for Wilson County government and get that credit allocated to them. We have put 100 more state troopers on the roads. We have hired some more TBI agents, and we have created a couple of human trafficking investigative positions. We take human trafficking very seriously in this state, and so that's something we have stepped up and done. Today, I met with Brian Newberry, and I had met with Jovi, or had a conversation with Jovi at another time. But we recognize that there is a shortage of EMTs in this county, and I know that in different parts of this county, at times, the EMS has had to shut down temporarily. And so in an effort to help fill those vacancies, we have passed legislation that would allow the local EMSs to train their EMTs in-house. And I was very excited and learned from Brian today that the latest class that's been hired in Wilson County has no training, but they are training at Blue Ball State on-site, and I think that's great news. And it looks like there's a good group coming in and another group that's testing right now. And I told Brian that I would go back and we would check and see if some of that Tennessee Promise money that can be used at trade schools and at universities, if that could be applied to these EMS and firefighters that are getting their EMT locally. We have recognized that I'm running short on time here. I will also tell you that the Hope Scholarship, we increased it from 1,750 to 2,200 for underclassmen. We raised it from 2,250 to 2,850 for upperclassmen. And we have made other various changes in recognizing that there is a shortage also of truck drivers in this state. We have passed legislation that if you are driving interstate, that means inside the state of Tennessee, you can now get a truck driver certification at age 18. Now, we cannot help what happens when you cross state lines and what the U.S. Department of Transportation says, so that does not apply to interstate, but it does apply interstate. So I know you'll have more business to conduct tonight, but I do want to tell you this as I part ways with you tonight, and that is that with talking to Randall today, to Mayor Hutto, he did ask me, he said, "Clark, would you rather come next month and speak to the new commissioners that are coming in?" And I told him, I said, "Mayor, this commission, particularly some of the outgoing commissioners, it's very important to me that I come tonight and get a chance to address them," because I don't know, I know you all have not forgotten, I certainly have not, but I would not possibly be a state representative were it not for this body. Over five legislative sessions ago, in July, or I'm sorry, in January of 2018, this General Assembly appointed me and commissioned me to go serve the 46th House District in the General Assembly. I have never forgotten that. I'm very appreciative. And for all of you that are serving now, whether you continue to serve or whether you are retiring or moving on to other things, I want you to know how grateful I am for the opportunity to serve the District, the 46th District, which is now basically this side of Highway 109 at Spence Creek. And so it has been a privilege to serve, and thank you so much for those of you that have put your name out there. Anytime you get involved in politics, just putting your name out there, you know, you're opening yourself up. And so thank you for your service, and thank you, Mayor Hutto, for the opportunity to address you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Boyd. Appreciate you.
Mr. Randall Clemmons wanted to come and address you about the state fair, Wilson County Tennessee State Fair. And while he's coming, you have an information form on your desk placed there by Sarah. That's to go in the update of the new booklet made, so if you would fill that out and just leave that on your desk, okay? You'll also see an oath of office on there. If you want me to administer that tonight, I will do that under new business. You would just sign it and leave it there. Sarah will pick it up off your desk as well. Mr. Clemmons?
We do thank you tonight for allowing us to come. For the last 43 years, you've allowed us to come on the commission meeting before the fair began. And as Mayor Hutto has shared tonight, the wonderful things that this commission has done, we are a great example of what this commission did in 1974, when it purchased 104 acres to form the James E. Ward Ag Center. And in 1979, when you entered into an agreement with Wilson County Promotions as a nonprofit organization to allow us to do a fair on that property and to allow all the profits that we make to go back into that. And as a result of what you have created, tonight, we can say that we have 1,800 volunteers that gave around 100,000 hours last year to put on this fair. And as a result of what you have done, we are now hosting the Tennessee State Fair. Last year, we came to share with you about the concept and what we were doing, and we were all concerned that we did not lose the Wilson County Fair and at the same time be able to take advantage of this opportunity that we had and also to be able to bring that funding to our county to further advance the James E. Ward Ag Center. It has been a good year. The state has been very supportive of us. You have been very supportive of us, and our elected officials in this room have been very supportive of us. And we can honestly say tonight that it is a good working relationship with the state of Tennessee. They've allowed us to operate the fair as we've always operated and to do great things. Our theme this year is 95 Reasons to Celebrate Tennessee, and we want to share with you about that tonight because this is important to you as a commissioner. We have all 95 counties in the state of Tennessee that will have a booth at this year's fair, focusing on the assets of those counties. We never dreamed we could accomplish that, we'll have to say. We have tremendous support from across this state. And what I'm saying to you tonight as a county commissioner, that our county is fixing to be in a showcase that it's never been in before, as our state comes together as one to come to Wilson County to celebrate these 10 days. And we thank you for what you've been able to create. It is the year of hay. We're three days away from it. We want to share with you tonight about a lot of new things that has happened, that you have been a part of in allowing us to borrow the million dollars to go ahead and build some buildings that we could have for this year's fair. We thought it was very important that we be a true state fair this year. And so you see before you our 4H and FFA building that is complete, that will have a grand opening on Monday of the fair at 9:45. We hope you can be with us for that. And our state perishable building, the FFA building is beside the General Stewart Fiddler's Grove. The perishable building is at the back of Fiddler's Grove, and both of those are housing state things from across our state. We have 4H and FFA organizations from across the state that have exhibits in the 4H FFA. The state perishable has entries from across our state and perishable items. And so both of those have allowed us to be a true state fair. Next, you will see on the screen our maiden Tennessee building that's still under construction, but as visitors come, they're going to be able to see what they're going to be able to have next year. We've had to try to find a way to house as many of those items that's going to be in that building next year as we could, and so we'll show you how we've done that. And then our new event pavilion, that we will be doing corporate events in during the fair, and it's also available year-round. It's going to be a great asset to the James E. Ward Ag Center and company picnics and different functions that can be held there. Okay, Sherry? Travel Tennessee, we just told you about. This is the building that we have converted for this year. You see at the top of it, the welcome signs that brings you into Tennessee. When you enter that building, you're going to be entering East Tennessee, and you're going to walk through it county by county and go out the far end in West Tennessee. There is a map painted on the floor of that building, county by county, just like it appears on our state map, and their county booth is above where they are. We are so thankful for what's happened there. We thank the Tennessee Farm Bureau, as they have printed two banners for each county. You'll see one there that's on the back of their booths, and there's three shelves that are showing different things from each county. Okay, Sherry? Ride Hoffer Shows. This is the carnival that we've had for several years. They are doing state fairs and national fairs, and we are very proud of them. We're also, it allowed us to be a true state fair, because we already had a state fair carnival, and you're going to see 60 rides there. In the center, you see a new ride that's only been put up for the third time, that's just come in from Italy, and it is a wonderful example of that. We're going to have 104 livestock shows. We are going to be receiving the $9 million in state funds, we hope, next week. That's already been before you of what would be done with that. The first thing that we're going to do with that money is we will be purchasing 18 acres of land adjacent to the James E. Ward Center that will be deeded to Wilson County, that will give us another exit onto Peyton Road to improve our parking as we go forward. We, again, we thank you for what you have done, what you continue to do. We're very excited about our state fair. This is our new state fair ribbon. We have the champion of champions from all the counties in the state. They're in a competition, and when you win that in each category, you will be receiving one of these. And so we've had great participation in that. It was judged today, and these ribbons were placed on that. Again, we do hope you'll come and be with us. We need your help as we host the state for this. We hope you'll come and visit. We'd love to have you at any of these openings that we could have, and we thank you for making this possible. And we know that we would not be here tonight if it was not for the Wilson County Commission and also for our elected officials that are in this room, because we receive great support from our sheriff, from WEMA, for every aspect of Wilson County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons and Mr. Coleman and Ms. Helen for being here tonight as well, and all the volunteers. Many of you volunteer, you do showcase Wilson County in a large way, and we thank you for everything you do. I know you've been working hard to make this next week spectacular. Mr. Goodall, any notaries to be added to our list?
No.
To a motion to approve a notary list?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report for the Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover.
I have a report.
Emergency Manager Directors' Report, Director Cooper.
Mayor, county commissioners, you see before you the call report, my district summary and the overall report. Activities going on, of course, Wilson County State Fair, you heard about that, that's fixing to start. We will have the WEMA and the Wilson County Sheriff's Office Mobile Command Trailer out there. I would like for each of you I would like for each of you that, if you have time, if you come out there, come by and see that trailer, and look at the amazing partnership that the county has out there during the fair, along with the fair. Contingency Plan is still active. Currently, we still do have some vacancies, as stated. We're currently thinking outside the box, along with what Boyd talked about on his end. And in addition to that, just to give a little update, we had 268 applications received, 167 were invited to test, 117 signed up to test. We started that today through Wednesday. They're set to interview 40 to 50. We'll hire about 16 of the uncertified, and that class will start September the 12th. We finished a certified class last week, five AMTs to start in the next two weeks. We have eight more for the next certified class to start on September the 12th. We have three medics just finished school, three are in the first semester that are on shift now, two of the ones that just finished orientation are in med school, and two that are supposed to be in the next class are in med school now. Quick overview of the plan, after testing, interviews, and the selection process, we'll begin a one-week orientation, followed by two weeks of emergency medical responder, 10 weeks of fire recruit with extrication, asthma, firefighter, safety and survival, live burns, and testing. Then in January, we will start the AMT hybrid for those. So that just catches us up on where we're at and what we're doing throughout this process. I would like to thank this body for allowing this opportunity to happen during your service. So, thank you for that. That concludes my report.
Motion to reapprove.
Second.
Any question? Commissioner Brees?
I just want to say, thank you to Director Cooper for all of your hard work over the last six months, well, probably closer to a year, to keep the citizens of Wilson County safe and served by WEMA. I know it's been very difficult, and I appreciate everything you've done to come up with solutions. So, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich?
No report.
Sheriff's Report, Sheriff Bryan?
Thank you, Mayor, County Commissioners. Your report's in your packet. Some of the numbers there just sticks out, pretty much they're on par for this time of the year, but again, the jails right at are completely full. We continue to keep eye on that. The road crew's been out and about, there's been a lot of time at the fairgrounds because there's a fire going on next week. But we still have some crews out, so let us know if anything we can do as far as the We'll be reaching out to, I'll skip that, I'll say it in a minute. The jail project continues to move along. It is ahead, right at, a little ahead of schedule, so everything's moving right along. We're looking to get that sometime towards the latter part of this year. Schools are back in, we had a successful opening of all the schools, and the SROs are out there every day. And I just, you know, the accomplishments of this county commissions and the ones prior to that, and Commissioner Ash back there for two, Sheriff Ash at the time. I'm thankful every day that I don't have to stand up here and ask for SROs to be put in schools, because this body done what it was supposed to do in the beginning, and there's counties across this state, there's some counties don't even have SROs in school, and they're calling, Wilson County, they're calling us, asking how we do it. How can us help, how can we help them get that? And I'm so proud, and I'm so thankful of everything this commission has done, done Finally, the ones that won't be sitting in them chairs next month, I'm going to miss each and every one of you, may not believe that, but I will, because listen, I've always had a good relationship with this commission, and I look forward to continuing that relationship with this commission, the new commission. And I'll be reaching out to them new commissioners, if there's any in the back, back there fixing to get sworn in, be expecting a phone call from me, because here's the way it works. I want y'all to know how the sheriff's office works, how the jail works, what you're spending your money on. So, just be prepared for that call, and I'll be inviting you up, actually, Jeremy Rich, new Commissioner Rich suggested this, and I'll be reaching out to get everybody, it's easier to do it in one group, so we'll get everybody up there, and any of y'all that ain't been up there, I'm going to call y'all too. Come on. But several of you have, and I appreciate that. That concludes my report, unless, the fair. Let me say one thing about the fair. We are working every day at the fair, and I appreciate Mr. Clemmons and Mr. Comer back there. I am thanking you, okay, Jimmy? But we're out there, we're going to be out there every night during the fair. You're going to see these guys and girls out there in uniform, all over the midway, and just, they're out there, and they're protecting that fair, they're protecting the citizens, so we can have a safe fair. So if you see one, stop them and thank them and encourage them. Director Cooper said something about we are set up out there with our new command center. I do encourage you, if you're out there, come out there and look what free money is, okay? That command post was free. It was donated, and it's state-of-the-art, and that's because the working relationship us and WEMA have, and this county commission for the funding of some of the equipment that goes in there. So, stop by if you can. That's my report, unless there's any questions.
Mr. Gentry?
Yeah, Sheriff, I want to thank you for all the good work you all do at your department. When the new jail is complete, or the new section, you'll be shutting down the old one, correct?
Correct.
And how long will that take to renovate that?
We're looking at least six to eight months.
Six to eight months?
Yeah.
Okay, and that will increase the capacity total to?
Right at 900, a little below 900.
People ask me.
We did that for a reason, so as far as, the building, yeah, the building cost, okay, but it's a one-time cost. What costs is staffing it, because that's ongoing, and we done that where y'all, as a body, or the new commission as a body, wouldn't have to take that hit. And so, we'll open it in stages, we'll hire it in stages, and I think it'll be all right.
Thank you. Many of you know that, of course, recognize by having the Tennessee State Fair here, but we have other honorees, and that is Sheriff Robert Bryan was elected by his peers and sworn in as the Tennessee Sheriff's Association's 22 and 23 President this past Thursday, August the 11th, in Severville, Tennessee. Congratulations for being the president.
Thank you, that, huh? There's 27 more put in. It was a heck of a fight. But now, listen, it's an honor to stand up here today, you know, there's 94 other sheriffs up there voted to put me in as president, and listen, I've been on the board of directors of Sheriff's Association. Sheriff's Association is engaged in state legislature in all aspects. It's going to be a good thing for Wilson County that we have a seat with the Sheriff's Association. So, I encourage, I think I'm probably, I was spending a lot of time at the legislature this past few years, I imagine I'll be down there a whole lot more. But in saying that, if any of y'all have anything, concerns about what's going on down there, please give me a call, and let me sit down and find out for you. Thank y'all.
Congratulations, Sheriff Bryan. All in favor, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vanata?
Yes, I just want to say a special thank you to Sheriff Bryan. I contacted him a month or so ago and asked him if I could bring my grandchildren to jail, and he laughed. But I took them up there, and he took them on a tour, and it was an eye-opener for my grandchildren. And I encourage anyone, in fact, I've talked to Mr. Luttrell, I wish every eighth grader could go through the jail. I think it would help a lot of our problems here in Wilson County, and thank you so much for doing that.
That's a good thing. Parents, grandparents call, want me to do that, yes. Listen, when I was a kid, we went to state penitentiary, okay? And yeah, you did bring them to jail, but for the right reason, okay? So, but it's something to see, and a lot of the school, high school kids do that, the criminal justice classes, I encourage it, and we'll continue to do that.
Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford?
Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, the Education Committee met on Monday, July the 18th, in the upstairs conference room. I move these minutes to be received and filed.
Second.
And I would also like to add, I've been a commissioner for 24 years, served each and every of those 24 years on the Education Committee, and I appreciate, Mayor, all that you said, and those, some of those in here, I do appreciate you as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Director of Schools, report. Director Jeff Luttrell?
You do have my report in front of you. Cover all of it, but we are back in session. Probably the biggest news first week was we did get off to a good start. Thoughts and prayers out to a couple of neighboring counties that had some tragedies with students being hit by vehicles the first few days, and that really kind of hits home, but we got off to a good start from that standpoint, and it is a lot to do with what goes on with our sheriff department, our police departments in these towns, as they manage the traffic influx that we have. Probably the biggest news for first two weeks of school is we're up 20,280 students is our enrollment, and that's climbing every day. In comparison, that's 985 up from where we were at the end of school. To put that in perspective, we were up 1,100 last year, so in basically 12 months, we're dealing with 2,000 more students in our schools. That is remarkable growth, and just with that brings some issues, but we're managing, our faculty and staff's doing a good job with it. And I was in, I think, six or seven schools today, and every one of them talked about still getting new students, so we expect this number to increase, probably until around Labor Day, we'll get a better idea. I will be updating with that information as we settle. We still do have some withdrawals we're hearing from, but not near as many as what we're enrolling. Do want to congratulate the newly-elected and re-elected county commissioners, and also members of Wilson County Board of Education, I included that information for you. For those that are leaving, thank you for your service. Everybody thinks public service is always great, and it can be real lonely, but what the mayor pointed out to us tonight, this county has had remarkable leadership, so thank each of you. I know you have, what you've done for your communities and your constituents, and so thank you for your service. It'll be a little more peaceful, but I hope you can find pride in what you've been a part of while you've served Wilson County. Just a couple of things. Construction update, Stoner Creek is rolling right along. We paint, the walls are being painted, the floor's getting ready to be down, I was there Friday for just a quick walkthrough. It's on schedule, except we are running into a couple of supply issues in electrical boxes. Believe it or not, there's two panels that they're a little bit concerned about, we're still hoping October to get that building and be in it. Our West Wilson Middle Project, expect to start seeing dirt move there here by the end of the month, and waiting on just a few more permits to be stamped, but working with Mount Juliet, and that's going well, so you'll see that one come out of the ground here this fall. Do want to mention, Mike Jennings sitting here, just want to mention his mother, Miss Jean Jennings. One of the first educators I encountered when I walked into a school as a college student was Miss Jennings. I thought she was the principal, but she was there subbing. And then, got to know her over the years, how she served Watertown and Wilson County School Board. She was a true educator, was always supportive of her schools, even got to call me professor. I don't know where she got that, but in recent years, when I would see her, just in recent weeks, at church, she was, would know professor what's going on in her schools. She had a great care for education in Wilson County, so just want to give you our condolences. She leaves a strong legacy in her community in this county, and that's what it's about to serve, and she did that and did it well. Other than that, included a football schedule for you, but I encourage you for other sports, fall sports, or something going on in campus every night. Just pick a school, and you can, if you've got time, you'll get to see some sporting events, whether it's volleyball or soccer, but football is always special on Friday nights, so I did include that schedule for you. And that concludes my report.
Will the report be received and filed?
Mr. Stafford?
Yes, sir, I got a quick question. The lightning strike for Lebanon High School HVAC, is that, will that be an insurance claim?
Sure, yeah, we've already filed a claim on it. We did get hit pretty hard there last week. They spent hours, I was there this morning, first thing, and they have, they're 98% back up. May have got them all back up today, but yes, we've already filed an insurance claim on that.
So you went ahead and paid for it, and just waiting for the insurance to reimburse you? Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director Luttrell. Report from Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers?
No report.
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs?
No report.
Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe?
No report.
Ho, 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 ho. I got to go back to Ag Center Management, there was something there on August the 11th that were passed out.
Just the other day.
Yes.
We don't have the minutes.
Minutes, I got minutes right here.
We got minutes, yeah.
Right on the desk.
Yeah, they're in there.
Got them right here.
These were left on the desk.
They're not in the packet, but they're.
They're on your desk.
Tag management met August 11th, in your packet, please receive.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir. Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe?
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Bernard?
No report.
Broadband access, Commissioner Walker?
No report. I would like to say thank you to Ms. Teresa Bush for everything she's done for the broadband, well, not the broadband, but the PEG channel, getting it up and running. Thank you to Mr. Bobby Franklin for helping spearhead that, and former Commissioner Jeff Joins as well.
Developing tourism, Commissioner Vanata?
Yes, they're, Development and Tourism met on Monday, July the 18th, in the conference room. The minutes are in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Second. I got a motion and a second. Now discussion?
Just one point I would like to announce, last year, 2021 through 2022, we had $3.4 million in hotel motel tax that came in. That is outstanding, and it just shows you what everything is going on at the Ag Center, the Expo Center, the tourism department, the hotels, everybody working together here. And I just want to say, from chairing the tourism committee for several years, how much I appreciate all the work that everyone's done, I appreciate the committee that worked with me, and I look forward to things going stronger and more motel hotel tax coming in. Thank you.
Any other comments? Will you continue to send out those reports, even after you're gone?
What'd he say?
On the hotel motel tax? Keep us updated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ethics, Commissioner Ash?
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Gentry?
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton?
Health and Welfare Recreation Committee met at the county commission room, met on August the 4th, Thursday night at 5:00 PM. Minutes are in your packet. Move that they be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash?
No report, but just to clarify, I might, I want to thank the budget committee for applying some of the ARP money to that. Commissioner Jones was up there the night, we requested it, and y'all have done that, and that will help the insurance program for a while. It's going to need some attention along the way, but that's very much appreciated by the employees. Thank you.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover?
No report.
Land and Zone, Commissioner McFarland?
Mr. Chair, we met on Tuesday, the 2nd of August, at 6:00 PM.
The minutes are in your packet, however, there is one correction. Uh, the head of the Corps of Engineers that came and spoke with us is Craig Carrington, not Craig Garrison. So that correction we made moved to be approved.
Got a motion to approve with corrections, I hear a second. I got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rules Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban Type Facility Board met August the 5th. Minutes are in your packet, be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Finance Directors report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
I can't express my gratitude enough to those of you who chose not to run again or who are leaving us one way or the other. And I won't call you all by name, but I will say that when the mayor had you stand up, I recognized immediately, this is a huge number of people who served on the Budget Committee, who served on the Road Commission, who served on Finance Committee, who served at Roads. So insurance, you have served on the committees that are tough, tough, tough to serve on. You are public servants in the truest sense of the word. I don't, I, I will never call myself a public servant. And people don't understand why. And I will tell you why I will never call myself a public servant. Because I get paid pretty well for what I do. I'm not a public servant. I have a great job and I love it. Okay? But I'm not a public servant. You guys are public servants. You get paid next to nothing. And you field constantly complaints. People don't walk up and pat you on the back and tell you what a great job you did very often. So please allow me one time to say, I am so grateful that you served in the capacities that you did. And I count each and every one of you as friends. And I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm grateful. But I will say this, y'all know, I'm always going to end or begin with a joke. And I said I wouldn't name you all. So one of the first people to take me under his wing was Kenny Rich. So I have to say thank you to Kenny. Cause he was one of the first ones. And what Kenny taught me was, when one of these people's patting you on the back, just watch out for the knife in the other hand. So with that being said, there are some substitute amendments in your packet where I made typos on some of the budget amendments. So they have the number on them. So when you get to that number, Ms. Andrea, I think you have them too. There was also another one in there that covers what was done with the American Rescue Plan the other night. You do have a report, a finance report for the month of July. I don't have anything particular, it's way too early in the year to talk about. Books are closed. Now, I did this very quickly this afternoon in the, in the, um, in the meantime, fielding phone calls and doing other things. I believe this fund balance report that I've given you tonight is correct. It will definitely be correct next month. I believe it's correct right now, but I will not, I will tell you that it did not have my undivided attention when I was putting it together. So that being said, that concludes my report unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions? Commissioner Bishop.
I would just like to say, even though you were paid, you certainly made our job a lot easier.
I, I am so grateful, ma'am. Thank you. Sincerely, all of, all of you, um, you know, great, great people. You, you picked me up a few times when I, when I felt the pressure felt down a few times, all of you. I'm, I'm so grateful.
Commissioner Rich.
I just gonna say, Aaron, I've sat here, I've had three different finance directors in my 16 years. Uh, one thing I can say about you, anytime I came to your office and asked you a question, you told me. You didn't sugarcoat anything, you told me like it was. And I, I want to thank you. You've done a great job. And I want this commission to continue to support you along with the new commissioners. And I've told some of the new commissioners, uh, they need to come to your office and sit down and spend one hour with you and let you go over the different funds and everything, so they will have a head start when they come up. Cause I know you'll work with them. Thank you much, Aaron.
Door is always open, any, anytime, anybody.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Thank you, Mr. Maynard. Report from the Budget Committee Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met August 4th and August the 9th in the upstairs conference room. Both sets of minutes are in your packet. I move that be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolutions.
I enjoyed Mr. Clemmons' talk a while ago about the fair, but he left something out. Lebanon chapter of the Antique Auto Club will have a car show on Sunday. Registration is from 11 to 2. If you got an old car, come on out. I'll be there. I'm part of that club. Left my note on. Okay. Uh, there was, um, resolution 22-1-16 on your desk is gonna say 22-8-16 is the one I'll be looking at.
Yeah, start the first one out and then we'll do the amendment.
Okay, well, the one, number one that you gave me.
With number one, it's in the packets, what we'll start with. And then, and then if the commission chooses to amend it, um, that would be the one, is 16 on the floor. Is it 16 that she passed out? But we're not going to do 16, we're gonna leave it as one amended.
There is an extra one.
I'm gonna read 22-8-1, it was in the original packet.
Yes, sir.
Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend in the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from the Capital Projects Fund to Ag Center.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
So here's a second.
Second.
Now, Commissioner Jones.
We need to amend it, or I move to amend it, to go to 20, what's the number?
16.
Okay. The, the main thing is to clear, just sort of clear the language up. The money's not going to the Ag Center. It's going to the Wilson County Educational Agriculture Center. And that's the main point of changing it.
So I can.
I move to amend and substitute.
I'll second.
Second.
And Mr. Marlowe? Here's, you can read it if you want to here in its entirety, unless you got it. Read that one as amended, Commissioner Marlowe, and then we'll be ready to vote.
All right. The amended, number one, uh, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from Capital Projects Fund to Ag Center for the Ag Learning Center.
Second.
Got a motion that's amended to amend that, to say that. I got a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, you ready to vote on the amendment? Can I do that, all in favor say aye? Got to take the roll call on the amendment.
Voting on the amendment.
Yes, amendment. And to make it, and to make it clear whilst you're doing it, what, what was changed was, it was stated in your packet that it was, the money was going to the Ag Center. And it needed to say that it was going to go to the Ag Center for the Ag Learning Center. And so that's all they cleared up. Everything else is the same. And they did clean up the language of Tim Evers representing the Ag Learning Center, so just Tim Evers by himself. And the Wilson County Ag Management Committee. Those two will have to make a contract agreement before we spend any of the two billion. Are we ready to vote on the amendment as amended? On the amendment? Okay. Going to vote on the amendment now. If you want to amend the current resolution of 22-8-1, please vote yes. If you don't want to amend it, vote no. Mr. Robinson? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25-0, resolution, the amendment passes. So now we'll vote on the irregular, uh, amend, on the amended resolution of 22-8-1 as amended. And any, do I hear a motion to approve it now?
Motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Breeze.
As I just ran for reelection on a platform of being fiscally responsible, I have to share this information. The fund balance for Capital Projects is at about $13 million. It's 13, 12,118 dollars. To be able to pass the pay raises, we have also put in a permanent $3 million transfer out of Capital Projects annually. Which means that this fund will no longer grow like it has in the past. So projected additional revenue for this fund for the entire year is $228,000. So if you look at this resolution, as well as the other two resolutions that we have to consider this evening, the total for the three, all coming out of Capital Projects is $2,734,784, which is 21% of the total fund balance for Capital Projects that we are about to allocate this evening. And we are six weeks into the fiscal year. So I don't know if anybody has looked at the numbers like that, but I think it's really important for us to take that into consideration before we allocate 21% of our fund balance on August 15th.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Maynard to speak to this. He was the first one I contacted about it.
Yeah. So the question was asked of me, I've had a few questions asked me, but the original question was, do we have $2 million in Capital Projects to fund the Learning Center? The answer is yes, you can take $2 million out and fund the Learning Center. What Ms. Breeze is referring to is when you look at the, the budget for 22, 23, we're only projecting what, once you take the, uh, the extra money that we're transferring out of Capital Projects in the debt service, we're only projecting the $200,000 surplus, $200,000 check. Does not change my answer, do you have $2 million to, to fund the Learning Center? Yes, you do. I understand Ms. Breeze's point as well, which is that if, if the fund is unlikely to, we're likely, we're unlikely to see the same level of growth where any time, you know, we've gotten used to being able to reach over into that fund and pull it at various points during the year. That may or may not be the case, uh, six months, eight months, 10 months. But again, I was point blank asked a question, could we afford to do it out of Capital Projects? I answered that question, yes. My answer has not changed. You can, you can afford to do it at the present time. Again, I understand exactly what Lauren's saying as well.
I think to add to that as well, and she, she called me on the conversation. You know, the Capital Projects Fund is there for these emergency situations that happen. I'm gonna build a WEMA station, I'm gonna build a jail, I'm gonna build a school, you're gonna issue a bond for that or even a capital outlay note. So it's there kind of almost as an emergency fund. And it's not going to grow, of course, depending on what our growth is like too. That estimated growth could, could change. It could go higher as well. So, uh, you know, used to in Capital Projects, to best of my knowledge, uh, we were really low. Yeah, we, we, you've built it up over time. And I think as these projects come out and it gets to dropping, and you're, these calls that you make later on may be a little more, well, I don't know if we could do that or not, you know? But right now, that, that's where you're at. So point taken. But that, that's also what that fund, in, in our mind, is that emergency hit when we need it, like the three HVACs, okay? But, uh, I, I, so good point. I hope that answers your question. Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, I, I don't know about the Capital Fudge, Budget Fund, but I know the Ag Center Fund has almost $2 million in it. Now, that's 55% of all the hotel motel taxes goes to that fund, and we passed that a few years back. And when we expanded the Expo Center to put a storage area there on the, on the north side, we used money out of that Ag Fund to do that. So is that a possibility, Aaron, to use say a million of that to fund and put the other million out of the Capital Projects to maybe alleviate some of that concern?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's possible. I would, I would like to point out on the Ag Center side, and I hope it continues. Ms. Vanada, Commissioner Vanada pointed out earlier that, you know, we were, went over $3 million in total in hotel motel tax. You know, 55% of that right now goes to the Ag Center. That's great, but I would like to point out that we set a record last year in terms of what the Ag Center has done. I would like to think that that would continue. But I would, I would feel a whole lot more comfortable with that if we had two or three years of performance like this as opposed to, as opposed to one. That being said, your question was, what if we did a million out of the fund balance? What if we do a million out of Capital Projects? My answer is, we're doing the exact same thing with the equipment that you're buying for the landfill. Exactly. So if that's what you choose to do, uh, I don't see any reason why you necessarily can't. Understand that if the Ag Center, uh, a few years ago, when we were really in the middle of, of everything being shut down with COVID, you know, we had to set up transfers from the General Fund over to the Ag Center because the Ag Center at that point in time could not rent things out, expo, et cetera. Just understand that if that fund starts to go down, you may find yourself making transfers out of the General Fund to keep it afloat when that time comes.
If we get there, we have other problems. I think the fact that we only have, we have $2 million in the egg fund. And inflation has caused the hotel motel tax to inflate quite a bit, as well as the sales tax. So I don't see that going down much in the future, but I'm not the decision maker on the finance. But I think when you get right down to it, the money is there, whether it be the General Fund, the Ag Fund, or the Capital Projects Fund. It just depends where you want to take it out.
Oh, question, Mr. Chairman?
Got a call for question? And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are ready to vote on the amendment on the floor. Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with the vote? Please record. Two yes, three no, resolution passes? Resolution. You voting no?
What? It's your res-
This is, this is, uh, this, this resolution was a $2 million set aside for the Ag Learning Center? I think that's why everybody. You wanna, you can, you can. I haven't declared the vote. If you want to change your vote, if you want to change your vote, you can. I have not declared the vote yet. I have not declared the vote yet.
Don't let him sponsor it then.
And so now I think we're good with the vote. We're going to say twenty-three yes and two against. Is that correct? Okay. Everybody good with that? Ready to move forward. Resolution passes.
I don't think I've ever taken that long for one resolution. Resolution 22-8-2, extending the resolution adopting Wilson County specialty license plates.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ready for three?
Here again, we've got one that will be substituted. The original?
Yes, sir.
Resolution 22-3.
Eight dash three.
I know, but you gave me eight.
I just got, I got six.
Yes, that's the original three right there, sir. That's it. That's the original three right there.
To amend the budget and appropriation resolutions to make an appropriation from general fund, ARP money to water projects in the county.
Motion.
Second.
A motion in second. Now discussion. And discussion would be to submit what the Budget Committee had submitted as a second resolution on the second night that they met that added the three funds to that. The three, and I think it's out there listed. Does it have a number on it, Mike?
It does not. It should not.
Okay, same number?
Motion here will be to amend, substitute this resolution. And then it will carry 22-8-2.
So you should have a resolution on your desk that allowed those three things that were added to this resolution by the Budget Committee's second meeting. One of them was the three amelances. The second was the HVAC for the Wilson County Courthouse. And the third one was the COVID-related funds going to self-insurance fund. So that resolution should be on your desk. And so if somebody would like to substitute that one for this one, I could take that motion now. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Walker, you have a question?
Got a ledger here that shows debits and credits on the three that were approved the other night, but I do not have a similar piece of paper for the utilities where the credit and debits are moving.
About eight.
Yeah, no, absolutely true. And I misunderstood. When I look at 22, 8, 3, it spells out everything. So I didn't feel the need to go back and do another budget amendment for that because it was all spelled out right there.
It is spelled out. And then we will add that to that if this amendment passes. Or this substitution passes.
Yeah. So basically, I kept the original 22, 8, 3 and just did a budget amendment for the additional stuff is all I did. So I don't know if that works with what Mike was trying to do or not.
It doesn't, it Mike?
It will work.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith?
Really quick, Mike, it's in the minutes though, right? Correct? Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion before we vote on submitting the amendment to substitute? CNN, are you ready to vote? We'll vote on this one as well.
Spend this money, man. Will the feds bring it back?
I've got a vote to substitute first.
You do.
And then I got a vote on the regular.
I thought we voted on it verbally.
No. We voted a unanimous vote on the adoption of the license plate. And then we went to this resolution here and I got a motion to substitute. And now we vote, we vote on that substitution. And if you vote to substitute it right here, and I got to do that by the computer because it's got money. I got corrected on that the first time, so I learned my lesson. So that's what, that's what we got to do the first time. And then we'll vote on the one as substituted. Normally what happens here, for all of you, we normally have that amendment and then we talk through it, but we got ahead of the game and thought we prepared those amendments. And that's probably the worst thing to do. I won't either. So this is to substitute the resolution to add that second budget member, budget meeting additional three items. So if you want to vote yes, vote yes, and we'll do that for the substitution. Everybody good with their vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, so the resolution passes. The amendment, resolution has been substituted. Now we'll vote on the amendment resolution as amended. And that is where the ARP money has all the designation. So if you want to vote for it, you vote yes. And if you don't, you vote no.
You don't have to motion.
That you had to have a motion to approve.
All hearts and minds good with your vote now? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes. Ready to move forward. I did too. My bad.
Resolution 22-8-4, to approve and accept the bond. Wilson County Road Commissioners on three, Terry Scruggs.
Here's the complication. Talked to Ms. Sharon, Steve's in the back. The two you're going to see tonight, they took over for somebody leaving office. And when they did, they put that bond in there and they put it out for four years. That's why it ended in the middle of his term. Going forward, she's going to correct that so it ends at the right time. But that's why we, that's, that's, that is the issue at hand. You took over for Commissioner Rowden. And then
That was a long time ago.
But it, but it got, it got the rotation off, Sharon said, because they sent her the, the bond, sent her the documentation.
What we're doing is cleaning.
Had to be bonded.
Go ahead and approve this one tonight. We've got three other bonds of elected officials that did not get in the package. One is for the mayor. One is for Jim Goodoff. And one is for Jackie Murphy. We need to amend and add those three resolutions in because they all need to have their bond approved before they take their initiative.
Motion to amend. Yeah, but they're not numbered already. Are they numbered?
Yes.
You already sent those to me last week. They're twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Those are the three you sent me. I emailed them out to everybody.
Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
I don't have to.
They were emailed out and stated if they wanted a hard copy, like you know, I was having a hard time the other day.
Did they, did they get emailed out after the?
Yes, you still, you still have to.
Okay, so we're going to move to add Mayor Hutton, County Clerk Jim Goodoff, and Commissioner Pete Jackie Murphy. Make a motion to amend.
Second.
I don't really know what happened, but I'm, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any discussion on all four bonds? CNN, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chad Bernard has given me his bond tonight. Chad didn't get elected to the Road Commissioners. He's been there for a while, so I'm not sure why we're going to use. We'll go back to it. We need to do it, we will. But when you get elected, you get a bond for four years. It's the one we've done for the mayor and the county director.
If I can tell you what she told me. You're exactly right. When they took over for that commissioner, they took over midstream. But And she said, but his has been off that time. It's what she told me, but I, that's Steve back there shaking his head. We'll go back and double-check that, but that's what she told me. I think the problem is we got more than what we need, to be honest with you. Because that's what I asked her. Yeah, I did. Anyway, to my knowledge, the people in office right now are bonded. That's what I'm going to story and I'm going to stick with it. And let's go to animal control, please.
Resolutions 22-8-5, to approve a grant to Wilson County Animal Control and authorize the county mayor to sign the application.
Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. There's no complications with this one. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes. Move forward.
Resolution 22-8-6, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, make an appropriation from capital projects and funds from the solid waste equipment fund to landfill.
Got a motion in second. Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. McFarland? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-8-7, to reflect revenues received, not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an additional appropriation into libraries.
Second.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Dow? Mr. Costley? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-8-8, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution, make an appropriation from the general fund to library.
Any discussion? It's a resolution. Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. We did good all up until this last commission meeting. Commissioner Brown?
Just one.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-8-9, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, make an appropriation from the general fund to general session judges.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
That's what I should have said.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-8-10, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, make an appropriation from the general fund to human resources.
Discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Dow? Commissioner Weathers? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-8-11, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, make an appropriation from capital projects fund to county buildings.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Gentry? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes. Twelve and thirteen and fourteen have been done. Fifteen and sixteen don't count. Any old business to come before this body? Under new business. At this time, we will administer the oath of office to the returning elected officials. For those who'd like to participate in this, you can do it on your own if you'd like to do that. The oath is on your desk. Just take it with you and bring it back to Sarah as soon as possible. But if you want to do one on your own, you can. If not, if you want me to do it, then I'm going to do that here in just a minute and ask you to stand. And I will swear everybody in at that time. Give me one second, Mr. Gentry. There's also, I'm going to do the new commissioners on their orientation on August the 31st at 5:00 PM here. So if you don't want to do it tonight for some reason, you can come and do it then. August 31st, have to be done before. So don't worry about that. I'll get with you on that. She's got August, she's got August 31st on here, but I'll get back with you on that one. I think I got to swear I'm in before September 1. For my outgoing commissioners, your nameplate is there on your desk for you to take. Your picture is there as well for you to take. And at this time, I'm going to ask those that are returning that would like for me to swear I'm in to please stand and raise your right hand. All you will do after this is sign that oath of office and leave it on your desk. We'll come by and pick it up. I'm going to say aye, and then I'm going to ask you all to say your name. And then I'm going to ask you to repeat after me. Aye? Do solemnly swear. That I will perform with fidelity. Duties of the office. Which I've been elected. And which I'm about. I do solemnly swear. To support the constitutions. Of Tennessee. And the United States. And to faithfully perform. Duties of the office. Of Commissioner. Representing. Name your district. Of Wilson County, Tennessee. Help me God. Sign that and leave that there. Also, please do your communication. If you want to update that, do that for me as well. I cannot say enough to the people that are here. The accomplishments that I read earlier were only a few of those. There is a whole list that Rachel Warren started keeping a long time ago of this commission. And so that is where I got that information from. Each one of you have special memories and special things that you passed on. The emotion that I see in your face from where I sat today lets me know that you were invested. You were invested. You don't do this job and have the emotion you got and show that tonight is what you committed to these citizens. It's more than a monthly meeting. And it is a lifestyle, and I will say it again. You will always be a commissioner that serves. Thank you so much for giving of your time. And we thank your families for doing that as well. Anything else to come before this body before we close it? Commissioner Gentry?
Yes, I have several friends that work at the election polls. And they're telling me they get a hundred dollars a day and sometimes they work up to fourteen hours. And I was wondering, is there any way we could adopt? They didn't get a pay raise with the pay plan or anything, and they don't work all the time. But they currently get a hundred dollars. I'm recommending we raise it to two hundred and fifty, which is considered about what the other counties pay our election poll workers. And is it possible we can do that tonight and make a motion that we do that?
I would, it would be good. It would be good for me if we could ask Ms. Tammy to come before the Budget Committee and make that, make that pitch to them. And if it needs to go through any other committee, we could do that. But that would, that would be good. We got plenty of time to do that. And so we will take that recommendation. But if you allow us to do that, that would be the easiest way to do it.
Okay. I will talk to Tammy about that. I thought maybe we could just do it here. Is it not possible to do that? I mean, if we could suspend the rules, right?
Okay. Any other new business to come before this body?
Motion to adjourn.
Need one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.